Okay, call the Pownell Select Board, regular meeting Thursday, June 6, 2013, at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of minutes 5:30-13 and 6:513, which is a special. Warrants, mail, road foreman's monthly meeting, Bridge 42 repairs, blacktop for Burrington Road, Center Street repairs, culvert pipe purpose, disposal of junk, ACO position, temporary holding status, and with the board's approval to be added, the letter that we agreed to send to the auditors in response to their questions that was sent to us a couple of weeks ago. Kennel information, and two executive sessions on personnel, one involving policy, one avoiding employer, another executive session on a town's legal matter, on pending suit against the town possibly. And then on the bottom, just to bring a talk on cat TV meeting with this particular board. With all that, everybody understand them a little bit?
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor. Okay, approval of the minutes 5:30-13?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Five, yeah, 6:513.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor. You're an abstention right. Okay, warrants, all in favor, aye. Payroll, 6:213 to 6:713, in the amount of $4,843.98. Counts payable, 6:713, in the amount of $5,631.31. You've got your lawn mowing in there, computer sales and service, some payroll transfers, and that's just about your larger items. I will take a motion on the warrants. Second?
Second.
All in favor. Aye. Okay, we have a letter, says I am writing to complain on the town of Pownell Cemeteries. I noticed there were no flowers planted Memorial Day weekend, and at least one cemetery had no flag. I feel this is a disgrace to the town's people and the loved ones that have passed. It is the town in such bad shape that we cannot afford flowers. As the board of selectmen, this should have been taken care of. I'm not sure who has done this in the past, but I'm hoping that someone takes responsibility for this oversight, and it does not happen again. Sincerely, former board member, Henry Stromeyer. We have a suggestion that the selectmen asked volunteers from a garden club to help out with the planting. The town will pay for the flowers. We also have a notation that flags were ordered and given to the lawn mowing person to put up at the cemeteries, but waiting for clips from the supplier that are on order. So when they come in, they should be taken care of. We thank you for your acknowledgement of this. We have a letter, says, Dear Select Board Members, I am writing on behalf of Florence Caliano, who resides on 2502 Mason Hill Road in South Pownell, code south in Pownell. Her culvert has been washed out by recent rains and have exposed pipe which appears to now be rusted and unsafe. It is close to the main road and needs to be replaced. She is a 98-year-old lady who lives alone and pays for her health care so she can remain at home. This leaves her with little money to live on, and let alone repair her culvert. I'm hoping that it would be possible for the town to repair the culvert for her. She does not have the funds to do this. Since we have our road foreman right in front of us, you're probably more familiar with this than I am or anybody else.
Yes, I am. Actually, she called me a couple of times, and when we were actually getting rid of the used culverts, I told her that if she wanted one, to have somebody install one, that she could come over and get it. And she said she was gonna come over, but she never did. I told her that without the board's approval, and being limited with time and all that, it wasn't my call to make whether the town could do it or not.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, this is basically private property, which, you know, maybe somebody out there can give her a hand with this, but...
I have a piece of culvert.
Yep. And if we're willing to donate that piece of pipe for that, if somebody wants to help with this situation for her, I think that's a nice remedy. I don't know how the town actually can get involved. You start setting precedents, which I sympathize with the position, the age, and everything about it, but every time you try to do what's right or what you feel is right, it seems to come back and bite a little bit. So if we can lend a helping hand, if somebody else can help there, contact either one of the board members or our road foreman. Thank you. We have delinquent tax report as of 6/1/2013. We will skip to the good part, which is total of $180,149.35. Interest, $24,449... 400... Yeah, $24,493.34. For a total of $219,951.01. Delinquent sortax. This is not excited, okay. All right, this was for May. Total amount with interest and penalties, $8,081.88. That was for May's report. And that is our conclusion of the mail. Okay, road foreman, slide right up and...
I guess the first thing off the bat is the...
Bridge 42.
Bridge 42. Hopefully, we have had the grant, structures grant for the repairs. The repairs are gonna consist of, there's a three-inch concrete deck over the superstructure. It's a three-span rolled beam bridge, built 1949. And that deck has to be saw cut and taken off the superstructure. And there's three areas in that superstructure that the concrete is deteriorated. And that needs to be jackhammered out and re-rebarred and repaired. We're gonna put an asphalt membrane, so it's heat-applied asphalt membrane, which is basically almost looks like a rolled roofin'. That goes on the same thing they did in North Pownell.
I was gonna say, it wasn't as similar to...
Once the bridge is repaired and the deck is square, that'll seal off the bridge. There's gonna be rubber expansion joints in between the three sections, abutments in the two sections of the bridge for expansion. And then a three-inch overlay of three-quarter asphalt on top of that. Both of the approaches, seeing as how you come on to get ready to come onto the bridge, you have to drive, actually drive down into a hole and then up onto the bridge, which is really rough on the bridge. So we'll cut the approaches, both ends, down and make it smoother to get down to the bridge.
Especially with the truck traffic that pounds out.
Not sure how long it'll take. There's gotta be three, you got a contractor's gonna do the repairs for the subdeck, pull the deck off, and do the repairs to the bridge. And you got the asphalt contractor, a guy that's gonna put the membrane down, and then somebody to actually do the construction work of pulling the asphalt up and digging the material out, putting fabric down, and bringing material back in, and bringing it to grade, then cutting the shoulders off. And I'm not sure, there probably gonna be some repair to the guardrails also, but that will take care of that section of bridge.
This gentleman that I met the other night, State of Vermont, I mentioned that we're doing that bridge, is Jaren Borg. And he said to contact him when we started this, that he could help us with this.
Okay.
I don't know how much involvement, but I'll give you his number, that may be...
Well, he's a stream alteration engineer?
Yep.
And he probably has contacts, which, since we're gonna hopefully be putting this out to bid tonight, I get some contacts from him, and we'll have more than one or two, maybe three bidders.
Yep. 'Cause that's what he told me to run that by, because, in fact, I'll give you the card right now, and you can just make a copy of it.
Actually, I think I've got it anyway.
Do you?
Pretty sure I do.
The bridge could be closed at any time?
The bridge will be closed, and, you know, the repairs have to be done almost to the center of the bridge. So the contractors that do it actually bring in the three-quarter inch thick steel plate and lay it down. So, I mean, they can actually do sections of it, but at night, they'll have that plate laid down. And it actually depends on just how bad the bridge is actually deteriorated. I know the abutment on the south, west end, is right square in the middle, right up next to the abutment. So that's pretty fragile. We copatched it a few times to keep it leveled up, and you can see where still, there's a little bit of a depression there because of it. But it will be closed at times during the day, I'm sure. And when they put the membrane down, they can only do half of it at a time. And then the actual contractor that's putting the asphalt, actually, has to lay a layer of asphalt over it, 'cause you can't drive a car on top of the membrane.
This is good. This has been in the works for quite a few years.
Yep. And it will be posted every day that the bridge will be closed. There's hours that it'll be closed, not closed totally.
I think the main thing is that first thing in the morning?
Right.
Bus routes and...
Right. They won't have it closed then.
And our squads and emergency personnel will have notification.
The other thing they've got is 220 feet long section of asphalt on Burrington Road. That will clean up some of the FEMA grant monies. I wasn't aware that they actually wanted it put back to asphalt, that's why it hasn't been done yet. But it has to be done before the 13th next month.
Right, paragraph, right.
And then, of course, we got 660 feet of Center Street dug up, about 12 feet, give or take, foot here, there. That'll need some asphalt that's been drove on now for a little over a month. So that probably should go out to bid also. No big hurry on getting that done, 'cause the longer the cars drive out, the better off it'll be.
How are we doing with the culverts on Burrington Road?
Haven't been there yet. We've been pretty busy just cleaning culverts around town and doing some shoulder work. He had to stop grading, well, because of that smudge, just because of the rain, but there was some shoulders on the roads that he had just graded. Of course, the material was all loose, and didn't get a chance to pack in very well. A lot of it ended up at the bottoms of some of the hills that he graded. Can't anticipate that, I guess, but you just gotta keep moving.
Yeah, and people ought to be aware that we do have a lot of roads that have this issue. So if they don't see you there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they can well be aware that you're on one of the roads and will.
The worst part of the whole, we had a snowstorm late in the year, there was actually two of them. Of course, when we plowed, it was dirt that got furrowed onto the shoulders. Well, that dirt, all that did is keep the water in the road. And that's a lot of the reason why we've got some areas that got washed worse than others.
Plus, we got a lot of rain. That was a tremendous lot of rain that came in a very short period.
And speaking of that, the intersections of roads where a washout occurs, and there's some rocks and pebbles on the road...
All the fines and sand and...
A couple of people have approached me, especially motorcycle riders, that, is there any way, and your schedule or something, or what do you have planned for that to clean that up?
Well, we got, there's two actually that cause havoc on our power road, Mount Anthony Road and bottom of Carpenter Hill. We usually, I'm not sure if they got swept this year or not, but we usually sweep that because it's easier just to put sand on that little apron than it is to put salt, 'cause the salt distracts right out onto the dirt and causes pothole all over. But that, we can sweep that off. I'm not sure exactly when, but you can put that on the schedule.
You know, if you do get a heavy rain, if you could keep that on your radar, especially those troubled areas, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, and you've got, one, two, three, you've got all the bridge, blacktop, blacktop. What else you got on your list there?
Culvert pipe.
Culvert pipe.
Yes, culvert.
Oh, yeah, we're getting towards the end of the year.
Culvert pipe purchase.
Culvert pipe is the same price as it was last year, $10 and one cent a foot for 18-inch culvert. So I was thinking about probably getting about $6,000 worth of culverts.
In comparison, if I'm not mistaken, when we discussed this the last time, this was a good price compared to what we've done before.
Yes. Well, it's a tri-state bid now, and that's what all municipalities are paying for if they're dealing with anybody that bids tri-state.
And where are they coming from?
These are coming from Ferguson.
Where are they out of?
Well, they got branches all over. There's one in Rollin', there's one in Troy, or I'm not sure where. There's one in Pittsfield.
This is similar to what we got for a purchase before, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, I think we got $7,000 last year. I still got it, I'm not even sure how many I got out there, but there's, uh, it could be eight, 10 lengths left to 18, and there's gotta be 12 of the two footers left.
You don't need any bigger stuff for Burrington Road?
No, those are all, actually, what's in there now are 18, or 15-inch culverts, concrete culverts.
18 of area, yeah.
We're putting 18s in there. It looked like there was an issue with the volume of area that is drained out to, I'd put a bigger culvert. Like, I can give you, for instance, Hidden Valley, just start off the blacktop, get down into that first dip, there's a swamp on the upper side, there's an 18-inch culvert there, and that's not big enough. That's gotta be replaced. We'll put a two footer in there.
And we got some of that.
Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, we're up to $5,000, and then we have to approve it.
Right, right. I've got, I think I've got about $9,000 in my culvert materials line.
Motion to spend $6,000 of culverts.
Yep. Got a motion on the culverts of $6,000?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one more thing. I know you've been there, Lad Road, that heavy rain where it washed out in the intersection of...
Rookman?
Rookman? Was that caused?
Culvert's gotta be replaced too.
Okay, was that, is that our...
Wasn't caused, no, it did go over the driveway culvert on the other side of the road.
Is that our culvert or...
No, it's a 12-inch culvert, and above there is an 18-inch culvert. The only, I know it went over the driveway, 'cause it isn't big enough.
I mean, right now, you got that much culvert showing.
Right. But that's whoever...
But is that an issue at Hespera, the homeowner? 'Cause each time you get a heavy rain, it's gonna get washed out.
That's an issue that the property owner should be addressing. I mean, it's just common sense when the water's running over into your driveway and the culvert's not taking all the water, but it probably should be replaced. It was an 18-inch culvert, 125 feet above it, that crosses the road. And it comes out of there pretty good gash.
And just one more thing...
But we're not done here.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't know what your...
We've got all night, Richard.
What your allotted time was there, Casey.
We don't have all night. We don't have all night.
(laughing).
We're not...
I had someone up on Middle Pownell Road complain to me about the speed, and this is not your problem. However, there is, as we discussed earlier, a 35 mile an hour speed limit.
35 miles an hour.
And it's a little ways down the road, and as you had said, you tried to post that sign further toward the entrance as you come off Barber's Pond Road onto Middle Pownell Road, but the ledger, the stones, just, it's prohibitive. If it could be moved up toward Warren Lozati's property, I think he has agreed to welcome the idea. Even perhaps a sign that says residential area, slow down, something, because it is kind of when you get off that Barber's Pond Road, a natural rampway, if you will. And people do fly up there. I noticed that, I think it's the Bennington County Sheriff's has put their little...
State police.
State police, okay. Put their little flashing light up there and stuff, which will work for a while until that disappears, but if we could possibly get that sign moved up a little further...
The signs are supposed to be posted 50 to 100 feet after every intersection. So, you know, I thought about putting it on the front, his front lawn, would really be an eyesore, but if that's where he wants it, if he doesn't mind it being there...
Well, I would speak to him about it if possible. I'm not giving you the blessings to do that, but I did have a conversation with him.
Yep.
And he said he would not mind it if it would help, because I guess it was, somebody almost got hit. Came very close to getting hit, and it was an uncomfortable situation, and if that would help at all, if it could be done, I think he would appreciate it, and so would the people living on that stretch.
Yes, if you warn pretty regularly, I'll ask him if that's all doable. And we'll just pull the sign up where it is and then move it back.
Great. Thank you. No more for you tonight from me.
The other thing you got on your list there is...
What's the proposal?
We talked about a bunch of junk that was laying around the shop. I got rid of all the culverts, except the ones I dug out the other day, they're over there now, but we thought of a new pile. But there's a whole pile of stuff out back. There's three dump bodies, there's that old truck number one that we took all the parts off it, and the only thing that's left on it now that's usable is the fuel tank. And there's just a host of old screen and old rims, I mean, there's just all kinds of hosts of stuff that've been stacked there. I got a bunch of signposts from the state, probably 10 years ago. And I went there to get them, and they loaded up everything, and a good vast majority of them were bad, and, like, you said, "Well, galvanized, you can't weld on them," and that kind of stuff. So all that stuff is laying around over there in the back of one of those dump bodies. There's a whole host of stuff over there. And the gentleman that took the culverts said he wanted to give the town a price on getting rid of that stuff.
I think that's a great idea.
And in that same thought, there's two oil tanks that came out of the school that have been hazmatted, burned out, holes cut in them like they're supposed to, and discarded. And they're over there. He said he would take those for nothing, 'cause it would cost him money to have them actually cut up enough to get them, so he could actually get rid of them. And then there's a bunch of old boiler shells over there. I don't think anybody's made with boiler shell material, but I'll tell you what, that stuff's hard and fast, and you can't cut it.
Smash it.
This is a good time to get rid of it.
They're steel, they're not cast iron.
Yeah, they're not cast.
Yeah, it replenishes some money and cleans up the yard.
You'd be there a month of Sundays trying to cut that stuff up, get it small enough so somebody would take it. And he said he would take all that stuff, just for the opportunity to put a bid in on the other stuff.
Yep. I think this is a great, great plan. I don't know what the rest of you guys' thoughts are, but it cleans up our area, puts a little resource to us, and I think it's good.
And he's gonna give us a bid on it?
Yes.
Right, okay.
He'll look it all over, he'll figure it all out, and he'll tell a number.
Okay. You can't make any art out of that, huh? You're giving it to the college.
Somebody's gotta have a lot more art looking than I got. This could probably do that.
The only bad feature of that, which I know will come back to haunt us again anyway, is any time you dispose of something without it letting everybody have an opportunity who wants to scrap it out.
Well, that's, like I say, that's why we're sitting here. He'll take and he'll put a bid if somebody else is interested. I mean, it's not cost-effective to actually post it to banner, but at least somebody through hearsay or through the cat TV or whatever...
Well, it'll get around town, everything else does. And not everybody has the capability of handling this sort of stuff either.
Right.
So that's another thing, you have to have somebody that's dealing in this particular stuff. You know, we just can't have John Q. Public and a, you know, a two-wheel-drive S10 back and say, "I'm gonna load up."
Right. Somebody gets hurt, and, I mean, when they come and got the culverts, I brought my log loader over to load them, so that way nobody's gonna get hurt, and there's no liability to the town, and, you know, the culverts are all rotted. Basically, all you're gonna get is 10 price for it anyway. So, you know, he gave us a lot more than actually what was worth.
I think we made out great. I think that's, it cleans up the area, we get some extra, that's good business, plain and simple.
Yeah, that's, you're right, man. That's exactly what, what some of the townspeople there, if somebody's interested, and I'll tell you what, there's a lot of it over there. Those three dump bodies alone are gonna be just a handful getting them out of there. And they've been there for 20-plus years.
Well, we talked to another, but you still think it's a wise idea to clean it up.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Well, and the same with the trailer out back, I mean, we got it pretty well stripped off. If we took and got the asphalt off the roof, there's nothing else that's hazardous or not good to burn. It's all just two-by-six construction, and that could be burned.
Yep. Fire drill, and then the frame goes to metal.
Yep. So...
Yep. Good plans.
What else you got on your list? That's it.
That's it.
Do we have a motion to go ahead and put all the bids out? Board approval?
Okay, we did on the culvert pipe.
Bridge and blacktop.
Oh, and the bridges and stuff, yes.
Like four bids here, five.
Yep.
There's a date on there, and if anybody else has any questions on exactly what we're gonna do with the bridge and how we're gonna do it, 'cause it's a substantial amount of money. Not the biggest project we've done, but it's a lot of money. gonna do with the bridge and how we're gonna do it, 'cause it's a substantial amount of money. Not the biggest project we've done, but it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And, uh, as it is, I'm gonna have to go down and see some, uh, some residences and, uh, make sure that, uh, you know, once the bid goes out and contractor gives us some idea basically when they could start, then I'll take a ride down there and, uh, try to knock on every door that I can to let everybody know what's gonna happen and how it's gonna happen.
Okay. We have four different apps here.
Make a motion, put Bridge 42 out for repairs.
Okay, that's the first one. And it's on the structural length, concrete decking over the structure, cutting and cutting the curves and removing, removing, uh, concrete, et cetera. That is the first one. And we have a motion on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second one. Pico, Pownell is repair, repairs of the free span roll bridge, repairs consisting in removing three inches of the concrete deck over the superstructure, removing approximately 240 foot of deteriorated concrete in three different areas of the structure, resurfaced level, concrete repaired with a epoxy coated rebar, et cetera, et cetera. More information in there.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number three, bids on the asphalt membrane to Bridge 42, same as above. The membrane will be torch applied toward the bid specifications.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Missed one there.
I don't think we pulled off the black top of the bridge.
Yep.
The approaches.
Repairs of the removal of 1,440 square feet of asphalt to be resurfaced to depth of 12 inches on the west approach and the east approach consisting, consist of removal of 2,000 square foot of asphalt and subsurface to the depth of 18 inches.
Motion?
There'll be fabric and crushed gravel shall be included. Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a copy of these here. If anybody would like to look these over further at their convenience. There, I think we got that. Um, black tapping, black tapping, no, we're getting at Burrington Road and black tapping, which being we're on the, we're on time for Burrington Road. And I guess it's the board's decision if we should incorporate Burrington Road and Center Street at the same time, which would be-
Yeah, and, uh, as long as the contractor knows that there's no, I mean, they can do it at the same time. It's just not that big of a deal, but there's some handwork over on, on this road where's, uh, I'm gonna run the backhoe down. We've got the asphalt cup, so I gotta go back there and peel back about, uh, well, four foot on one end and, uh, probably 30 feet of the two-inch lift of asphalt so that they got something to blend to.
Right, yep, okay.
So, it's a smooth transition, the whole, I don't wanna disturb the dirt 'cause it stands there because it's harder than a rock.
Yep, yep.
So, we're gonna leave that and just pave it over just like it is.
Okay, so we need a motion to go out if we decide on both of these roads at the same time while we're ordering.
As long as it's built separately?
Yes.
And make the motion.
Second. That's 120, 130 ton of asphalt, so there's still, if, uh, the board decides, uh, if they wanna do some more asphalt and they've got a couple of sections of road and take another, uh, six, seven, eight hundred ton or probably even more than that depending on which road you wanted to do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There, we did the culvert purchase, so we are, now I think I'll set in that direction.
Yeah, I thought of something while you were talking about something. I can't remember what it was. I was like, this isn't too important.
You can sit here. We'll bust through a whole bunch of other things. You can always come back.
Oh, have you found your pickup yet?
No.
Okay, she's in there. She's getting pretty rough.
I know it. I know.
We're gonna get to a point where as the exhaust manifold's gonna fall right off it, there's no way I can superglue it back on.
Sure you can.
Is that something we should put out the bid or?
No, it's, uh, something we're just gonna have to keep looking. I mean, uh, we scored really, really good with the last one and I'm sure there's gotta be another deal out there somewhere close.
Yeah, it's, it's, so we don't get into a conflict 'cause we do have a conflict policy in place at this point. In me being a board member and chairman, buying the vehicle, if somebody has a one-ton, three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive diesel or even a gas at this point, uh, that's willing to give us wholesale price or better, we are certainly open to anybody. Uh, the reason I say wholesale price or better, when I've been involved doing this as a town person and I feel it's not a big deal, I've tried to do it for that, whatever the cost was to roll it back to the town and be that. Uh, because there could be a conflict of interest show up with me doing this. If anybody else is willing to bring a great deal to the table, we certainly are ready for it, so.
We're just, uh, we, we just should have one before winter because, you know, it's a, a plow truck and a pickup to get around town pretty quick and, uh-
But I mean, on the last one, I was fortunate to find a vehicle that was, you know, 6,000 miles and it was a private sale and it was a heck of a deal. Uh, so if anybody can do that or even come close, it doesn't matter who puts it in our lap and we save money. That's a good move, so. Avoid conflicts and somebody being upset that we did something not properly. Okay. Next thing we have is a letter of response to our auditors. In fact, probably about three weeks ago, we had a letter from our auditors asking us different questions. They read it off. They wanted how much vacation time an employee gets with us for seven years. The answer is 15 days unless contracted otherwise. How much sick pay? Three days per year for active if not used in a maximum of 10 days unless contracted otherwise. Does everybody, employee get $100 towards shoes purchased from Family Footwear? If not everyone, then who does? Uh, et cetera, et cetera. Full-time highway department personnel, transfer station personnel, cooperate machinery and all wastewater personnel and the people involved in that with OSHA's rules, et cetera. Who gets health insurance? What percent premium does the employee pay? What does the town employee pay? Uh, see attached fields on the back. Each one of these are set up differently. If an employee usually works six hours a day, how many hours? If an employee usually works a six-hour day, how many hours bereavement time does he or she get paid? Currently, the policy is three days or 24 hours. Uh, what, what is the most overtime paid on a road crew paid to the highest person? Why would we allow somebody to work 50 hours overtime? The road foreman is authorized to determine who calls or who gets called out and at what time of day or night. The storm event determines the amount of the needed time to keep the town roads open. Do we pay overtime for eight hours work, over 40 hours work? If a sick day is taken or a vacation day, but the work on Saturday, do I get paid overtime? Yes. In July, board voted to increase wages, but there was not an amount of, in the minutes of the meeting. Most employees got 1.5% increase. However, there was one employee that got 12.6. How was that fair? Uh, I don't believe that's an auditor's question to start with, but no employee received a 2.6 increase. There was a reduction in hours worked on one particular employee. Uh, what is our policy on tardiness? Each case is reviewed individually to see if action is warranted. Why do we not have time clocks at each location? We are repetitive- Yeah. This question's been asked many times. I'm gonna blow that word out of focus, so. Many times we've answered it. Several times we'll answer it. One more time for the last time, it's not warranted or feasible. What is the $20,000 administrative charge in the road fund? The road fund is reimbursed. The general fund for the administrative services provided by the administrative assistant. These were the questions asked. These are the answers. We have the letter. We have the information on the help. I'll take a motion to sign this as we agreed to do before and send it to our auditors.
Motion?
Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait a second. I missed it. Sorry.
Yeah.
You were on this round or no?
No, I'm gonna abstain from that. Uh, there's questions, answers there that I don't totally agree with and I didn't really discuss it with anybody. So, I abstain.
Okay. I don't believe ACO positioning, we've discussed this in executive session, so I don't believe we have to go into executive session to have a motion on what we talked about. What we need is, is there a motion on what we discussed at our special meeting? On hiring ACO?
I'll make a motion to discuss it.
Well. We're down to two candidates.
Suggestion, wouldn't it be pertinent to visit both of the places that are willing to be dogs after a resident to kind of know where our dogs are going? I'm checking neighborhood. Wouldn't you want to do that? Make a site visitor or something?
I'm nervous about it, to be honest with you. So, yeah, I have no problem with that because-
And then I would recommend that the board hold off on making a motion.
Because one is in town, one is out of the district, but the area, we don't know what it is like for holding containment. Um, if we want to table this and do a site visit?
I think we're putting an awful lot of emphasis on something that doesn't really take a whole bunch of time.
We put a lot-
An overflow of dogs and then we've, uh-
Well, we've been-
I've been, I know where both of these people live and I got no problem with either one of their places. The one in Bennetton, we have no objection anyway because, uh, that has nothing to do with anything with our, uh, zoning or whatever. And, uh, so, I mean, I have, I have no problem with that and I think that, you know, we're trying to drag our feet on this thing. That, I think they were both very qualified and I just move along. Put somebody in. We gotta have somebody for people to call. And, I mean, surely the dog would be better off if it's picked up and, and somewhere there'd be room in the road.
Well, we got nothing right at the moment. We've dragged our feet for one hell of a long time and there's more to this that still goes, but that's up to the board at this point.
Now, Bennetton, they just pass the zoning. They can't have any more than five dogs in.
Right.
So, he's got any dogs now.
Well, again, I think that's up to the person whoever, who, who gets the position.
The only, only thing they say, Rich, on that is, that's fine, except if they get into a catch-22 and can't do it, then we're back to the drawing board again.
Well, we're not after somebody who can harbor dogs forever. All we want is a short containment time. I think we ought to sign, sign a contract with, because we're only in for five days by law or whatever. And we can try to, we can work on, I still say we should work on finding places for these animals if nobody wants them. Surely, if a person owns a dog, they'll know it's missing within five days if they want the dog. If it's a nice dog that someone, nobody cares about, wow, I don't think that happens terribly often, but I'm sure that we could, uh, work on these places. I mean, like that one lady was talking about, you know, Berkshire, they got a, a shelter that takes them. Uh, the last dog officer we had used to take them all over the place. And this lady that was here, Kathy, uh, she was, she knew contacts and stuff that, and I think that's where we ought to be working rather than working on harboring animals for long periods of time. That's not our, uh, that's not, I, I think the town's responsibility. We wanna pick up the animal if it's lost or if it's, uh, causing damage or something else and we wanna do the right thing by it. And if it's not adoptable and stuff like that, well, then we have it euthanized. That's our responsibility. That's as far as the town goes, as far as I'm concerned. And if somebody can take a dog for a day and keep it at their house or whatever, uh, we have a containment facility. We got, uh, one of them wire things, like they got a protractor supply there. And I know where there's another one I'm pretty sure I can get and a couple of igloos. I mean, if we go with the person from Pownell or even to, to give them to that lady in Bennetton. She had a fenced-in yard where she was talking. I mean, we gotta do something rather than just-
You don't know if they'll fit in their yard, number one, a, a 10 by 10 fenced-in area.
I think she made that clear that she had room.
She had a fenced-in area.
And she had plenty of room.
She had plenty of room.
I think she made that clear.
But we don't know about the other one. Um, our contract with Great Fields, it's been a while since I looked at it. Can we check with them and see how long? Is there any time limits that we can contract with them or is it just an open thing that, you know, do we have 30 days? Can we just do it on the cuff and see till we get a standard set up?
The agreement, um, the agreement is dated August 20th, 2012, so it's nearly a year old.
No, but I mean, there's no time restraints on it. If we started with them and decided two months from now that we had a, actually a place to house them ourself, we could go that direction.
Uh, it looks pretty open-ended to me.
Yeah, I think that is.
We already said before, we weren't locked in.
Looks open-ended.
Yeah, because this-
It's to take them.
This would give us a temporary, right now we have no place.
I mean, it is one year later. I would maybe check on the, uh, charges.
Yep. But this would give us a drop-off point, I don't think.
And another point before we get the, uh, cart head of the horse is, uh, I'm, I'm under the understanding that somebody has applied for a permit down here in South Pownell to run a kennel. Now, look at, if they did and if that permit goes through and it's within six months or a year, why are we bothering with all this stuff? But let's get something going in case somebody has the dog, we could pick it up. They got somebody to call. We're acting pretty irresponsibly. We got nobody for them to call or nothing.
It's all somebody's looking for that has lost their dog. It's somebody to call.
Correct, to get the word out and see what they can do. I mean, it seems to me, you know, and as far as holding them, I mean, I think we're, we're really overkillin' on that where we could, you know, and $15, I know a lot of people that their dogs, not a lot of people, but I know some people, their dogs have been picked up and they were picked up and taken to Great Fields from Bennetton. They go over there, they gladly pay their 15 bucks a day or whatever it is for a couple of days. They holler at the dog and they make sure they put it in the truck when they take it, when they go to town. Because that's, you know, that's what people do.
Rich. Man, Ronnie. I don't have a problem doing this. I, we need to do something one way or the other. We, we played with this. We actually had a motion, I do believe it was last year, to spend $1,000 and put a shed, kennel, temporary. And in the process of not being able to get one for $1,000 and nobody stepped forward to help build one, we didn't follow through again. So, the thing went on the back burner. What I just handed you was a letter that we can get into after we decide what to do. It's what we actually, the bottom basics we can do on a holding facility, which if we found a piece of property where they could come to, 'cause I think before, it's all said and done, and it's only a thought and opinion of mine, that we're gonna have this issue again, that we need a place that these dogs are housed when they're picked up, 'cause somebody may not- somebody may not be able to house them at their particular home. They may be able to take them to Great Meadows or someplace else in the morning, but there may be coming a problem with them actually being housed at their residence, and if there is, if we had a place, it could be that way, or they could be held for the five days, or whatever, but I'd like a backup plan, and right now, we don't have it, but if we put one thing in place, the next thing we need to put in place is find out if and when we could put this particular type of a shelter up on some of our property, so the next time around, we are covered. So if John Q Publica lives in the middle of town, says, geez, I'd like to have it, but I can't keep him in my house, do we have a place? So the first thing we do is get back to the business, uh, are we going to vote on an ACO?
I don't see why not. If you want, I'll make the motion, let's, uh, I call a motion for a vote on Animal Control Officer.
Okay, we have two that are, been applied to us. I don't think I've got them. Good one. Okay, Nancy Messina, she is up at, on Barber's Pond Road.
Uh, she's on V Hill.
V Hill, okay, she manages, okay, right, I know that's where, that's why that came in, okay, she's up on V Hill. We have, the writing's terrible, worse than mine.
Arvion Vincent.
Arvion Vincent in Bennington. We had those two that were, are applicants.
Well, I'd make a motion for Ms. Vincent, for one reason, she has a degree in something to do with animals.
Animal science.
Animal science, or whatever, and, uh, she, well, she likes to call herself the dog whisperer and everything else, so I think she has a lot more experience. That's, I know.
Here, we have a motion for Arvion Vincent. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, hear a second. Uh, do we have any other nominations for that particular position? Then being heard, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Okay, I'm gonna abstain, too. Actually, I'm gonna vote nay, but, I'll vote nay, Linda, but you have three, so.
I'm only abstaining if it goes against most.
Yep, okay. Linda, will you do the contact, please? All right, the second thing I'd like you to do is, each one of you have a copy of this, requirements for primary enclosure, look at it, discuss it, think about it, we will discuss it, and we'll get more information on where and how we can do.
One question I have on this is, is this, it says primary enclosures, but I think we're talking about temporary enclosures, is there a difference?
I couldn't find it in there. This is what I was directed to, that this was the base minimum that we could do, when I talked to...
Kun Yen, or?
Kun Yen, yeah. Animal Welfare Department, State of Vermont, and I told him what our general thoughts were on a eight-by-twelve storage shed with a run-out front, housing possible five dogs, cage in the area, and he was very impressed with it. He has looked at our situation before, knew what we were up against before, and he thought this was a very nice setup, and if we had a place to do it, it would be great. So, I have his number, if any of you feel that you'd like to visit with him, so you're not taking anything, because I talked to him via cellphone, because I called the office, and he was on the road, but he's the one that had this shipped down to me, so I'd have this. So, it's something we played with, we should work on it again, and see if we can actually have a place for it, because we're gonna run into this again someday. Hopefully, it won't be for a while, but I get a sneaky feeling it'll be before we know it, so, and hopefully, it won't take us three years to figure out what the answer is, so.
Any response from, uh, Cat, or Melon?
No, not yet. Only thing I have heard, and we can discuss it further next week with him, is we need some sort of a plan drawn up before he can approach them with it, which, if I get a moment next week, I'll try to skittle a little, drawing together on what would be, the eight-by-twelve is simple enough, and the runoff the front of it is obviously the same.
So, uh, we're talking about using this year round.
Yep, I mean, there's, similar to what we've done, um...
Well, my concerns are water and heat.
Mm-hmm, they would have to be checked every day for water, which would be the Animal Patrol Officer job, uh, in a case of a sub-zero night, and a dog, other than, say, a shepherd or a dog that could handle being in a coop that was with hay or whatever, a lot of animals can, uh, if it's a Chihuahua or something like that, obviously, somebody's gonna sneak it under their coat and bring it home. We don't have a heated place for it, we're not gonna be able to, then you are building a kennel, and then you go back to the front page and see what you've gotta do to do it, and we certainly don't go there.
Well, I, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate here, um, suppose we do take a dog in, and the, uh, the dog dies in our care.
That's happened.
What's the responsibility, uh, no liability from the town whatsoever?
As long as you've made ample, you know, we've had dogs get hit by cars.
I know, but I'm talking about while they're in care.
No, but I'm saying, we've taken them, and they've died, or we've had to have them put down.
Well, oh...
We become the owner of that dog when we pick it up, when there's nobody else there. Somebody has to do this. Uh, it's not a great job, this is why we contracted with other animal shelters, to veterinarian clinics, to euthanize, now, we have a clinic up the road, the vet that will euthanize for us, but you also gotta remember, if we euthanize them, we have to get rid of them, and that can get very expensive.
Well, I know, but I, I'm just talking about...
Yep, I think...
Should a dog die?
Yeah, perish in our...
In our care, what is the town's liability and responsibility? That's...
Yep, well, like I explained before, with the policies...
I mean, what do you do with a person, suppose it is the family pet, and it's twenty below zero, and the dog freezes to death, and you just go, oops?
Well, that's where...
You know?
They're gonna be like, for like foster homes.
Usually, and we have had, the lady was here the other week, discuss, and she would like to get on board with us and help us, and these are people that you go outside the box a little bit.
As long as we have the bases covered, and...
I don't know how you cover them all, Rich, because we won't know till they hit us.
Right.
But it's, it's called common sense, and if we reach out, uh, I've done it, I'm sure there's other people on this board that have done it somewhere in their life, taken something and taken it home with them that maybe wasn't written down anywhere, I mean, it's just something you do, so. Anyways, looks this over, we will work on this again, and hopefully, before the turn of the decade, we'll have a situation straightened out on it. We have actually three executive sessions I'd like to see, but before we go into it, because there may not be any decisions, may not, Adam, I'd like to discuss something that was brought to my attention with Cat TV. This board has a meeting with a planning commission next week, and we had a local resident call and ask Cat TV to come down and film the meeting. Uh, first off, I don't think this resident has the authority, or maybe I'm wrong in this, but I don't think they have the right to call Cat TV and come down to do a meeting. Even if they do, I think there should be some information, we are the legislative body of this town, we are the ones that are trying to maintain and run it. In Cat TV's defense, I have a feeling that this particular meeting will be called to order, there is a very good chance we may end up in executive session, which if we have these gentlemen come down from Cat TV, spend a half an hour setting up, and then say, oops, we're in executive session, they have to break down and go home. Uh, I feel this is unnecessary, I'd like to give Cat TV an answer this evening that, that I don't believe it's in this board's interest that we have them come down next week.
I also believe it's gonna be in executive session.
I mean, there's a possibility, and it's just, it's a time that they're not scheduled to do these type of meetings, it wasn't brought before us, which, if, maybe if it had, we could've discussed it out loud, but, I mean, I appreciate the work that Cat does, and I don't want these guys spinning their wheels, I don't think it's necessary, and I should, believe it should be come before us, when it's us that's involved.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So what is it you're looking for?
I'm looking for a motion that we can tell Cat TV that they need not respond.
No, is this our meeting, or the...
This is the planning commission's, but we're involved in this meeting, and, uh, they come down, they don't do the planning commission's meeting.
They never televise the planning commission meeting before.
Right, they do the select board meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Another thing I'd like to say is, uh, the planning board, they don't, they don't televise their meetings, right?
They do not.
And, uh, so, if they wanted Cat TV, I don't care. If they don't want them, I don't care either.
They didn't call them, though.
That's, I didn't say that. All I said was, if the planning board wanted it televised, I'm sure they probably would have, this is what I was gonna say, was, they probably would have called somebody. I presume that Keith may show up, or somebody, so it'll get out there anyway, whatever is spoken, I should hope it would. That's all I got to say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't care.
Okay, if you can relay that message to your superiors and, okay. Okay, I'll take a motion to go into one out of three executive sessions, one will be on personnel, uh, one will be on personnel on job description, and one will be on a legal matter, which is, uh, pending.
Most of them are executive for personnel.
Okay. Second on it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.